Good morning. Jennifer Taylor, a resident of the town of Parsonsfield in the county of York, state of Maine. In the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby required to warn and notify the inhabitants of the town of Parsonsfield in said county in state qualified to vote by law in town fairs to meet at the town office at six thirty-four North Road in Parsonsfield on Friday, the eighth day of September, A D. twenty twenty-three, at three P M. To act upon Articles one and two. The polling hours are three P M. until seven P M. for Article two. And to notify and warn said inhabitants to meet at the town office at six thirty-four North Road in Parsonsfield on Saturday, the ninth day of September, A D. twenty twenty-three, at nine A M. To act on Articles three through forty-seven set out as follows. Article one, to choose a moderator to preside at said meeting. Moderator elections took place yesterday. Warrior Hermance was elected moderator. She appointed Norman Blake as a deputy moderator. Norman will moderate this part of the meeting. I would like to look for a motion to hold off on reading the full warrant.
Move. Second?
All in favor of not reading the full warrant at this time? Any opposed? Okay, at this point, I would like to pass the meeting over to Norman. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Good morning, for those of you who don't know, and I think I see mostly all familiar faces here. My name is Norman Blake, I'm a migrant moderator from the town of Baldwin. We'll run today's meeting as usual according to the rules of the Maine Moderator's Code as propagated by the Maine Municipal Association. And that codifies about two centuries of, of, uh, town meeting, town meetings in Maine. First of all, let's, uh, let's all be, ah, there, there she is. Let's all, uh, let's begin by doing something we can all agree on. Rise and, uh, close our flag in our hands. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Um, before, uh, before we get into the results of Article two, the election, Ed's got one or two things to say.
Crap, he wouldn't like to watch.
That's okay.
Uh, good morning, everyone. This, this is about the Spirit of America Award, which is on the first page of your annual report. It's awarded to a resident in each town in Maine for outstanding community service. The selectman felt that Wes best exemplified these qualities for our town, and he was nominated. As I said, the first page of the annual report lists all his accomplishments and achievements. Well, most, I could talk to Sue about the rest of it. Uh, so, we have a certificate here from the spirit people. And there's, I guess, a dinner later on, at some point, the E folks were invited to attend. So, on behalf of the town, Wes, congratulations. Since the stands are here, I was gonna ask Jesse to do it, but since the stands are here and Wes is right there. I'm gonna crash and burn. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Surprise to me when the, when the selectman came back four months ago and asked me if I'd accept this. And I says, well, there's nobody else in town from the week. He selected you, so I says, well, I'll take it. Take this in the hush. It's all we've got now. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Danielle, sir?
Two more little things, two more little things, that's right. Well, not little, actually.
That's right.
Uh, these things get left to the end and sort of times, sometimes forgotten about. And people leave, and it's like, whatever. But I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Jesse for his six years of select service. And hopefully he'll be back in the future, but I just wanted to make sure the town, he knew that the town recognized his contributions to the town. And also, a new person, Jen Lewis, who is hiding somewhere.
Right in front of you, Ed.
Put my glasses on.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for voting me in. I'm looking forward to it.
And Jen's gonna bring, I think, a new perspective. Jen's, I don't wanna say the social butterfly, but Jen, Jen's certainly a lot more social in effect than we are. And she's been responsible for the Monday coffees and the afternoon lunches and trying to bring the town together socially, whereas maybe we try and do it financially. I don't know. But anyway, so welcome, Jen, and we'll always look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You're, you are, I didn't come out there, okay. Really, it's fun. Thank you. Let's move on to Article two, to select my, to elect by secret ballot the following town officers. We'll go right to the results. For our selectman, assessor, overseer, the board, three-year term. Uh, prevailing is Jennifer Lewis with eighty-five votes. Um, closely chased by Jeff Reitlin, five write-in votes, and Harvey got a vote. Um, for MSAD fifty-five director for a three-year term, Judy Ingram with seventy-three votes. And we, we have a couple of, uh, write-in votes, people teasing their friends. Um, planning board member for a five-year term, Roger Moreau, sixty votes. Um, alternate planning board member for a three-year term, Harvey McCumber with seven votes. Uh, Jeff Trailing with two, and Lynn Sunlow with one vote. I assume those might have been writers. Budget committee member for a two-year term, Denise Crocker has fourteen. Uh, followed closely by Deborah Jackson with four, Pamela DeTremble with three, James Barron with three, Harvey McCumber with two, Jeff with two, and Cliff Crowe with two. Down to budget committee member for a three-year term, Janet Berger has sixty-six votes, followed by some single number of write-ins. Again, people wishing to torture their friends, I suspect. We do it in almost every town. Uh, for director of the Piper Free High Fund for a one-year term, Marion Wright has one vote, and Alex Kemet has one vote. And, uh, director of the Piper Free High Fund for a three-year term, uh, Linda March has a vote, one vote. Secretary Treasurer of the Piper Fund for a three-year term, Dale Donalds a vote, and James Barron has one vote. And those are the results of the, the elections. Um, congratulations to those who have, have prevailed and got your work cut out for you. Um, so, let's get down to business. Article three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred sixty-one dollars in order to contract for a full-time, twenty hours a week, York County Sheriff for Parsonsfield. Contract period, July one, twenty twenty-three, to June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Do we have a motion?
Move.
Move in second and discussion. Yes, all right.
I tilted my windmills earlier this year. Um, again, I, I look at where we live and the surrounding communities. And I'm not saying that we're, we're not getting some, some bang for our buck potentially, but for the amount of money that we're spending, I don't see any difference from what goes on in Cornish and Porter than what goes on in Parsonsfield. And I think the money can be better spent towards, you know, snow removal in the winter, other services and things that need to happen. And, um, again, I just think the money can be better spent, especially since last year we overspent our money on some two hundred thousand dollars. Again, that's my, my small little piece of my tilting of the windmill.
Jeff, I think I saw you start to put your name in there.
Yeah.
Did you put your hand in there?
I was looking at the base screen, see if I was up there, but I'm not. I, I have the camera this way, and then you can see the select board response.
What's on your mind?
My, what's on my mind? A lot. Um, to the gentleman about money, spending on the budget, almost a deputy. Two thousand nine, we had a constable. We spent thirty dollars. And since we've got our deputy, we've spent almost seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Um, and it's nothing personal against deputy, but every single year, I keep saying, I'd like to see a police report, not just at the end of the year, but I want to see a police report every month. And I haven't got that, and I've said it every single year, and every single year, and I still don't get it every single month. Now, the select board might get a police report every month, but there's a general public scene. Does anybody here see a police report every single month? And if the select board does, but you don't. I've asked to have it put on the website. It was on twice in two thousand twenty-two, in September and August. I'm trying to remember the show. So my point is, we're not getting a lot of police reports. I know something such as under investigation can, can be on, but it should be, when I go into the town hall, it should be a board out there, and I said it every single year, with a police report on board. And now that we have the state police controlling, the state police report should be there. If there's any police departments in your town, you should know what's going on, just to know what's going on. So, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars after ten years, are you getting your money's worth? Well, two thousand nine, you were only paying thirty thousand, thirty dollars for a constable, constable work with the deputy. That, and that's all I have to say right now.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Cliff?
Yeah, I'm, unfortunately or fortunately, I'm gonna have to totally agree with you. I mean, in any transparent world, there is always a recording of reports. And I believe that it's really important, as the cost to have sheriff keep going up, they're not going down, we need to be transparent and have reports. Uh, because there are incidents in our town that continue to happen, and police should come in on a monthly basis and see a list of complaints. Maybe they don't hear it all the time. Could be with that, could be with their, their record that they show monthly what was discussed, and there could be a complaint board. I know for a fact, out in the country where we live, the roads are getting awfully blackened by tire tracks. And, and we all know what that's, what that's, what that is. And I can hear it from my house, and I'm sure if I can hear it from my house, and most of the sound goes over my place, because I live down in the valley, I'm sure everybody, at least all through Middle Road, hears what's going on. And that shouldn't be happening. So, my point is, is to support totally what Jeff said. For that kind of money, we need to have transparency and reporting on a monthly basis. Thanks.
Further questions, comments? Quick one, Jeff?
I would like to see the deputy come to a select board meeting once in a while and, and speak on, you know, on what's going on in Parsonsfield. You know, tell them a Facebook Live, it'd be nice to see a face.
Further questions, comments?
The same.
Yes?
The town right now, I think, is, is quite quiet. We came from a town you wouldn't wanna be in, and the problems that we're having with cars and everything else. And I wanna make sure that if I make a phone call, I have somebody there I need. And a lot of you don't think it's necessary, and it only takes one time for somebody to really get hurt. And right now, we don't know what's going on. We don't know if we're gonna get people in our community that are not suitable to be here or have no life, and what is gonna happen to all of us. I, I'm not a young person anymore, and when I need help, I wanna know there's somebody there I can call every single time. That's all.
Further question, yes, a way back.
We spend a lot of money to protect our citizens in this town, and I believe that this is only one aspect of that. And I think it should continue, and hopefully we'll not have to union, but if we're there, it's needed.
Okay. Are we ready to vote on Article three? I think so. Article three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred sixty-one dollars for the sheriff contract. All those in favor? Those opposed? The article is approved. Article four, to see if the town will vote to combine its various non-dedicated sources of income into a general revenue account for which it will pay its expenses as authorized by this town meeting. Do we have a motion?
Move.
Second?
Move in second and discussion. Jeff?
I'm on the budget committee, and budget committee voted, no recommendation. Selectmen voted yes, so on out of four, I would like to know the reason why the select board voted yes.
This is how we pay our bills, Jeff. We get income from excise tax, from real estate taxes. Those are the undedicate, non-dedicated sources of income. They go into a bucket. We have to pay our electric bills. We have to pay our snowplow contract. That's where the money comes from. It's really an administrative thing.
Okay. I was just gonna say, if the budget committee didn't know, maybe. Okay, thank you. Yes?
I believe that Article four never came before the budget committee, actually. That's why there's no recommendation.
Yeah, it really isn't a budget issue.
Dan?
Did you have questions? Some, the budget committee would need, but it's not having to do with how the budget comes and goes, it's just an administration.
Okay, are we ready to vote? Jeff, one, one more thing?
If it is administration, then you should say administration decision.
Ready to vote on Article four. Article four, see if the town will vote to combine its various non-dedicated sources of income into the general revenue account, et cetera. All those in favor? Those opposed? The article is approved. Article five, see if the town will vote to authorize a selectman to use up to fifty percent of unappropriated surplus balance to reduce the twenty twenty-three tax commitment.
Move.
Move in second, discussion and questions. Here and done, all those in favor of Article five, as read. Those opposed? The article is approved. Article six, to see if the town will vote to authorize a selectman to borrow from the dedicated town funds in anticipation of taxes, set amount not to exceed seventy-five percent of the town funds and be repaid with appropriate interest. Have a motion?
Move.
Move in second, questions, comments? Here and done, all those in favor of Article six, as read. Them as opposed? The article is approved. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to authorize the municipal officers to spend an amount not to exceed three-twelveths of the budgeted amount of the twenty twenty-three annual budget during the period from July one, twenty twenty-four, to the annual meeting in twenty twenty-four. Have a motion?
Second?
Move in second and questions? Here and done, all those in favor of Article seven, as read. Those opposed? Article is approved. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectman to close all unexpended appropriations and overdraft into the unappropriated surplus account. Do we have a motion? I need a motion for you consecutive. Oh, okay, I didn't hear you, Jeff. Okay, move consecutive, questions, comments? Here and done, all those in favor of Article eight, as read. Those opposed? The article is approved. Turn me page. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to expend the following dedicated funds in accordance with state's federal law. These are plumbing, building permit fees, animal control monies, L R A P, uh, state road assistance, uh, program money, FEMA grant money, uh, M E M A reimbursements. That's what Maine Emergency Management. And the American Rescue Plan. Uh, have a, have a motion on Article nine? Move in second and questions, comments? Jeff?
I see plumbing and building permit fees. Years ago, they used to have a report on how many permits were issued out. Over the years, it's been a kind of up and down situation. And I just wanted to note that I really want to see, um, more detailed information in the town report on, uh, building, uh, home permits. I know, I know the ConCland is, uh, doing some research and stuff, but if we don't know how many houses are built in every single town report, then you're not gonna know our growth. So, that's just a simple point.
Thank you, Jeff. Any further comments, uh, related to Article nine? Yes?
Um, how much monies were, were allowed for our town under the American Rescue Plan?
What, what, what do we have going on in our rescue plan, like Jesse?
Two, two hundred and six.
It's in the, it's in the last, do you, do you get this report that we have out there?
No, I did not, Ed.
Okay, it's in the last, the last page of that report, has
Okay.
The status of the rescue, we want to, two more things to vote on at the end of the meeting today, and that will theoretically use up our two hundred and nine thousand dollars.
Yeah, I didn't care where it went, just how much was probably.
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Cliff?
I think Jeff is making a good point. I just don't know how we can go about having, uh, you know, more transparency around building, plumbing, building permits, because the town keeps growing. And, you know, it's important that we have a report, because we are seeking money into that, into paying for that. So, I, I'd like to see a process through the select board, how we can be a little more specific. You know, what, you know, what the plumbing, how many permits, you know. We see what's going on, on at least on a monthly.
Look at this by any chance?
Is that, is that listed in the back of the book, how many permits were?
It's under
What the hell are we just doing?
Town activity report.
Okay.
You should look at that. That has the police reports. That has the June code enforcement report, which has the plumbing reports and all that information you were concerned about.
So, one, once every town meeting, we get one posted?
Well, all of these reports will be posted, or should be posted, on the town website.
On a monthly basis?
On a monthly, yeah.
We're, we're working on it. We're getting there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. On Article nine?
Could you repeat the questions, um, because someone asked what they were hearing and everything.
What?
Cliff, could you stand up and, 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 in twelve words or less, summarize what you said?
Just basically, I was concerned and, and clarified. We wanna sort of keep track of how many plumbing permits and, and building permits, the CEO.
Wants, uh, a summarization of how many building permits for various activities, but probably most specifically residential dwellings are, are happening in Parsonsfield over the last year or so. Um, reason is, he's, are you on ConCland Committee?
Uh, no, no.
Well, he, he has interest in, in knowing, uh, how the town is growing and where and how and what sorts of, uh, what sorts of structures it needs to build.
David said that they're working on it.
Yeah.
Well, if you look in it, if you look in these numbers, we finally got a report we liked, which goes along with what Cliff was saying. So, for instance, for the month of June, we had six building permits, six plumbing permits. It gives the name of the person that asked for the permit, and it gives a lot location of where it's being done.
In one of the stores.
I read that already.
Okay, so that's, oh, that's exactly what Cliff wanted. We're just gonna be expanding that, so this will show up every month, for the appropriate month, obviously. And then, the annual report will just have a summary of, obviously, the last twelve months of what's happened. So.
Point is well taken. If you know you don't have a fogborn voice, um, please stand up and take a deep breath and bellow out vote for the benefit of those with hearing aids and those of us who are too darn vain to get them. Uh, anything further on Article nine? Jeff?
I was just, um, I've been looking at the reports of two thousand nine to two thousand twenty-three, and as far as building permits go, I, I'm stepping here, it's sort of changed between, um, detailed and not detailed. And I noticed there's a couple of ugly towns that have some little bit of detail information. I, I know the select board is aware of this, and, uh, that's my point. I just wanted to show.
Okay, anything else on Article nine before we vote on it? Article nine, to see if the town will vote to expend the following dedicated funds in accordance with state and federal law. And they are plumbing, animal, L R A P, FEMA, M E M A, and American Rescue Plan. All those in favor? Those opposed? The article is approved. Article ten, to see if the town will vote to raise and or appropriate the sum of two hundred thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars for the compensation for the town officers and or employees for the ensuing year. Do we have a motion?
Second?
Move in second, questions, comments? Here, Jeff?
Is there any information on who is getting those benefits?
On, on who is getting what, Jeff?
Whatever, whatever we're voting on. The, uh, detailed information on who gets what?
Selectman in the town report, do you want to do a layout?
Well, it says selectman's assistant, it says
What page do you want?
Sixty-one. List of the office, and if we only have one person in that office, it's sort of, sort of or three, so it says selectman three, so.
Page fifty-one in the town report.
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one, sixty-one.
All right.
See what I told you about your case?
Help, I can do, help, I can do this as well?
No, that would be one thing, Jeff, that's, that's not specified for a person.
All right, thank you. And that's all right.
Dan?
I wanna point out that the budget committee did not make a recommendation on this. And that's because we were given the total to be expended and not have the breakdown. So, we felt we did not have enough information to know what we were voting on.
Cliff?
This is, this, this can't happen. I mean, there's a perfect example of a member of the budget committee. This is the largest part of our budget, and they didn't have all the information. This should not happen.
Uh, Dave? Yeah, I fully agree, Cliff, and personally, I don't know why that was. Um, nobody came to me. Had somebody come to me, we could have gotten the information, or someone else. Um, so, okay, that's it.
Well, first of all, at these budget meetings, first of all, they, I understand when they started them in August, because some of the financing isn't finished by June or July. But there should have been a selectman there. And if you were there, David, maybe some of these, uh, even no votes or none would have been clarified, and they could have voted one way or the other. So, I think there should be a stipulation that for the budget committee, there should be a selectman there that is aware of all of these different questions. That can be answered, because I sat in on the budget committee, and none of those people could understand some of the figures that were given to them. And the, the idea of the budget committee is to narrow it down and find out And the idea of the Budget Committee is to narrow it down and find out exactly what the town is spending and what they're going to vote on in the town meeting.
Yeah, I agree, Cliff. Todd, the only thing is, no one selectman is going to know the answers to everything.
I have all three, Tom.
It's difficult for that. However, a selectman could get the answers, and that's something we should take under consideration. Next year, hopefully, the Budget Committee can start meeting earlier. We had a changeover in financial systems in January, and that's caused all kinds of havoc, and hopefully it'll be much cleaner next year.
Anything, any further questions, discussion on Article ten, Town Officers Compensation?
Just one quick thing. If we run into this problem again next year, don't forget, we shouldn't be voting on this. We should have this problem cleared up. That shouldn't, Dave. David said that it should have never happened.
Okay. Further questions, comments on Article ten? Here and none. All those in favor of Article ten, to see if the town will vote to raise, appropriate the sum of $207,707 for compensation of town officers as listed. All those in Those opposed? The article is approved. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,174 stipend plus seventy-five percent of plumbing permit fees and all other CEO fees, fees for compensation of the code enforcement officer. Move in second. Questions, comments? Yes?
How do you stipenations for the code enforcement officer prepare to how other towns do it?
I believe, Gary, it was close to like fifty percent either way. You know, some towns gave a full stipend or a full salary, and then other towns, this is kind of a more traditional, older way to do it. This has been something we've been discussing for, off and on for six months, about changing it. And we were getting a little closer. I'm not going to see the end of it, but we're getting closer to making, making, you know, a decision, you know, to come up with a fair hourly rate for the code enforcement officer.
You mean, do we have a code? What this figure is at the end of the year?
Uh, it's.
Based on?
I assume it's in here. I believe it's in most of these.
Well, while Jesse's looking that up, I can tell you that in Baltimore, the code enforcement officer gets an hourly rate period. I can't remember. I moderated a couple other towns, and I can't remember what you do.
I guess it probably is the report.
Well, I'm not seeing it right this second, Gary, but it was in last year's, I recall.
Right, it's not a budget item, so this part of it, the article is a budget item, but the actual payment is not because it's just comes in and we pay it out, so it may not be in here. We can find it out for you.
Further questions, discussion on Article seven, plumbing stuff? Okay, we're ready to vote. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate $3,174 stipend plus seventy-five percent of plumbing permit fees and all other CEO fees for the compensation of the code enforcement officer. Those in favor? Those opposed? The article is approved. Jump down to Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following sums to cover general governmental expenses. Now, got a question for you. Is everybody okay on reading that, and we'll just consider that reading the first two lines is sufficient for this article, or would you prefer to have me read down through all the categories and the numbers? If I don't hear any, Dan?
I move the wave reading hierarchy.
If there's no objection, that's what we'll do. Then you won't have to listen to me drone on. However, if somebody wants to hear, you have the right to. Anyway, Article twelve, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the following sums for the various categories in Article twelve. The total under this article is $265,184. Do we hear a motion?
I'm on the screen.
I need a motion before.
So move.
Move in second. You?
Yes. I'm Judy Ingram, and Jim Baron and I are your representatives to Stocker River Coalition, and I thank the Budget Committee for raising the donation to $600 from $400 last year.
Any other questions and comments on, you know?
David? Well, you guys might like me after this. We went to a new insurer, starting, I believe, this coming Monday, and because of that, we don't have to raise the first item in that list, surety bonds, I believe. They are included in the new policy. So I would like to amend this article and strike the first entry, which is account 5101 surety bonds, $800.
Okay, so your amendment would be, who's got a number scratcher, to subtract $800 from the $265?
It's like two sixty, two four, three eighty-four.
Would you say, Jesse?
Two sixty-four, three eighty-four.
Two sixty-four, three eighty-four. So David, your amendment would be to change the total governmental expenses allocation under this article to $264,334 from the listed amount and eliminate, where are we? The surety bond under account 5101. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is there a second? Okay. Before we vote on Article twelve as a whole, we have to vote on the amendment, or we have to discuss it before we can vote on it, if we want to. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Okay. All those in favor of David's amendment, basically to scratch 5101, the surety bonds for $800 from this article, please so indicate. Those opposed? Everybody's in favor of saving $800. Nothing wrong with that. Now, get back to Article twelve as amended. Any further discussion? Yes?
I don't know if the, if Parsons Field comes under the mandate of the Family Leave Act.
Of what?
Of the Family Leave Act. It's a federal mandate.
No, it's a state.
Excuse me, a state mandate, I'm sorry. It states that any entity that has more than fifteen employees has to engage in this. Do we, are we exempt from that? Is the town exempt from that?
We don't have fifteen employees. I said, we don't have fifteen employees.
So you're under the threshold, is what you said.
I also believe that municipalities are exempt.
It's fifteen or fifteen, fifteen employees or less here today.
Are exempt, yes.
Yeah, fifteen or less, yes.
Yes.
Once you hit sixteen, you become required.
I believe so, Jeff.
Further, further questions, comments on matters? Jeff?
Okay, 5108, I have a lot of someone. Medical medical insurance. Is it copays with an employee that has that insurance?
The current policy says that the town will pay for the least expensive policy that MMA offers that we're a part of, if the employee, for the employee. If the employee wants this middle or top tier, they pay the difference. And we also have a graduated plan now where family members can be covered partially after a certain amount of time. Nobody has reached that threshold.
Okay. This offer covers an increase?
Well, yeah, dramatic increase, twenty-five percent.
Who qualifies for medical and dental?
It's in the personnel policy, the Select Board and road crew, clerk, concler, Selectman's Without looking at the policy, I'm not sure, but the policy's on the website.
It might be a gray area. I know some companies, they, you have to work X amount of hours to qualify for insurance, and I just wondered if the employee qualifies for that, you know, X amount of hours to get medical insurance. We all need medical debt. I'm just wondering, just what's the threshold why you're talking about X amount?
It's, it's in our, I believe you just said.
And personnel policy.
Personnel policy.
Cliff, could you have your hand up?
I did. I'm referring to five one zero four.
Please speak right up.
I'm referring to items five one zero four and five one one two, those two articles. Now, if you put those two sums together, that's, that's a fairly sizable amount. Under professional services, is that including all of the legal fees that we pay our lawyer? Okay. Would you say the largest chunk of that $29,000 is the legal fees?
I believe so. No. Where is the assessing coming out? That's my only question. But yes, I believe you're right.
Okay, and on what, five one one two, unanticipated expenses. What might fall under that? Fifty thousand.
Can you give, can you give Cliff an example of?
Fifty examples, could local fees all?
No, they've got their own. We had some work done on the boiler that had to be, keep it running. If our well went out, I shouldn't even say that. But things like that.
Right, okay.
Oh, yes. Further questions on Article twelve as amended? Okay, we'll vote. Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the following sums to cover general governmental expenses. And again, we've amended this article to get rid of surety bonds. We're now at a total amount for this article, $264,384. All those in favor? Those opposed? The article is approved. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate $1,000 for Comprehensive Plan Committee expenses. Do we have a motion? Move in second. Questions, comments? Here and none. All those in favor of Article thirteen is read. Those opposed? The article is approved. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate $5,000 to be placed in the sidewalk capital reserve fund. This is account number five four one four. A motion? Move in second. Any comments, questions? Here and none. All those in favor of sidewalks, Article fourteen as read. Those opposed? The article is approved. Just as a point of interest, in the town of Baldwin, we have exactly ten feet of sidewalks. It's down near what they used to call the corner station area, and it just goes from nowhere to nowhere. The state of Maine put it in with your money. We don't know why. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the following sums to cover protection expenses. These are Horton's Comp Insurance, Kisa Falls Fire Packet Dispatch, Fire Truck Reserves, Streetlights, Hydrants, Animal Control Expenses, and Hobbit Hills Animal Shelter Inc. Total under Article fifteen would be $179,541. Do we have a motion? Move in second. Questions, comments? Speak right up, please, Jeff.
Fifty-two, fifteen, fire hydrants. I know there's nothing we can do about it. It's $58,000 every single year comes up, but it's time that the towns get together and go to Augusta and get something done. Every single town is paying way too much money for fire hydrants to be tested, and we need to reduce that. And I think if all the other towns around get on board, maybe we can do something, but we're getting, taking advantage of, on those fire hydrants.
Further, Cliff?
Jeff, can you give an example of other towns that have taken that under control? Do you know any of the towns?
Nobody has it under, oops, don't worry.
So through the entire state of Maine, everybody's paying at least $58,000?
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to bore everybody with all the information, but yes, they're all, they're all in that range, and they all say they can't do anything about it. But I think if all the small towns get together and say, hey, we need this thing reduced, you know, it's just a, somebody's taking advantage of.
Sounds like a good reckon to get into.
It's a lot of money, and if you're going to talk about towns.
Way to the back, yes.
Yeah, can you tell me?
Please speak up.
Can you tell me when would be a good time to come to the selectmen, and we need to build a fire department in Parsons Field? And we talked about years ago about X amount. The town, you've been away some years, and then we would get some grant or some, I wasn't involved in it, some, something.
The question?
I have two friends that cannot get insurance because they have such big old houses that are nice. But what they're worth to rebuild, their insurance companies won't do it, you know? I thought that they would be able to do it.
The question was, how can a citizen or citizens approach the selectmen to get a discussion going regarding a new fire, fire station?
Well, we have workshops before our regular meetings, and if you call Debbie, she can schedule some workshop time, probably an initial meeting just to get an idea of what you have in mind. I mean, I recall that there were talks earlier, but I was not involved.
Chris, um.
Chris McLean, yeah.
Thank you, yeah. Had something really going on two years ago, and there was going to be grants and, anyway, but we, we got to do something. We got to, because I think Parsons Field is starting to grow, and.
Okay, yeah, if we can get you to a workshop, let's do that, because this is not the forum to discuss that.
Am I going to have to run around town with, have people sign your warrant?
I have no idea at this point.
Okay, okay. All right, well, I'll come on and visit you guys.
Have Debbie put you on the agenda? Right, Debbie?
It's a different D.
D's confuse me. I still love it. I'll get you folks over here.
Okay, fire hydrants are $58,000. How many fire hydrants do we have in Parsons Field?
Twenty-three.
Okay, so you pay twenty-three and $58,000. They earn the fire hydrants in places they often do work. Does anyone want to take that chance in case their house catches fire? And?
They test them once or twice a year. And that's where the water miners for the town.
Right.
So lots of people.
Yes, and back.
Getting back on the fire button.
The gentleman's recognized.
We do pay three additional towns to provide coverage for our. We do pay three additional towns to provide coverage for us. I think it's Limerick, Newfield, and Effingham. You know, Parsons Field's a big town, so the station out of Kisa Falls, it just takes a few months to get to there. I don't know if that would help these people on insurance in our book. We are contracted with these other three towns to provide fire service. You know, where I live, by the time Kisa Falls gets there, I wouldn't have much left, but Effingham can probably get there in five minutes. Because Effingham now has a fully staffed station during the day, not fully staffed, but staffed station, which a lot of these, uh, volunteer, uh, small towns don't. So Effingham's a little bit of a step ahead of a lot of the other towns.
Yes.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you something about the towns around us, and of course, I live in South Parsons Field. And it's usually Newfield that comes here, and I'm sure it's Effingham when it's up by Taylor City. But Limerick does a lot of work too. And I will tell you, I know several fire people in both of those departments, and they're sick and tired because our fire department doesn't show up, show up until there's only a foundation left. And they're usually left there to make sure the fire doesn't kick up again. It is ridiculous, a town, sixty-seven square miles, and they don't have a fire station. So I think the three of you should start taking this more seriously.
Okay.
And not just making it a joke.
This is not the time to discuss.
Well, it is, because we have an expense here for the fire department for sixty-two thousand dollars.
Okay. Yep.
So, so it is, I'm not out of order here by saying that. And I just wanted to rebut his, uh, thing about having other towns pick up. They have their own problems.
Well, we, that, they are, we pay them to do it. If they didn't wanna do it, they, they, they can tell us.
What, what person gets to talk in a town? That's the way it is. Um, we, we're starting to stray a little bit off the, the, uh, article. This is, this is funding, not the, uh, the specifics of the execution. But it is important, so I will allow limited, uh, limited discussion. Um, I think the, uh, selectmen in our future, selectmen that have heard what people have said and probably taken under advisement. Would you care if-
Well, I just wanna comment, you know, we pay them to do it. They're not doing, they're not, they, they come to us and, and they agree, and we have a contract with them. If they didn't wanna do it, they could say, we're not gonna do it anymore. But that isn't what they've said to us. So they shouldn't really be complaining about doing it.
Yes.
Where is that line item that we pay? We have a, an expense here of sixty-two, two thousand plus for Kisa Falls. But where is that, where is that appropriated amount that we pay those other towns?
It's, there's something further down, from my recollection. I can't really tell where it is now. We'll get that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Article thirty-two looks, uh, pertinent for that certain people here. But we're not, we're, we're not at Article thirty-two yet, you know, we won't talk about it. Now, Jeff?
Before I go ahead, so somebody mentioned about the workshop. If we do have a workshop, it should be posted on the website to allow people to know that there is a workshop. And it should be on the agenda ahead of time, not just a workshop that somebody knows about. And fire hydrants, um, they don't all get used, uh, per se, with a fire item. Is that even the medical reference? Because it's not, just because it's a fire hydrant doesn't mean it's gonna be used as a fire hydrant. Just twenty minutes.
In the back.
Could I make a motion to vote?
You, you can, but, uh, move the question takes a two-thirds vote. I'd like to see if we can maybe do it without the added cumbersome. Are we ready to vote on, on Article fifteen, protection, about some expenses? I think so. Okay. Article fifteen, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate following sums to cover protection expenses. The total under this article, one hundred seventy-nine thousand, five hundred forty-nine dollars. All those in favor? Those opposed? The article is approved. Article, Article sixteen, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the sum of eighty-three thousand dollars for Socapie Rescue Expenses. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Move and second. Questions, comments?
Rescue what? Rescue what?
It's the ambulance service.
I say ambulance service?
Yeah, yeah. When you get old, you'll be happier for it. I got a ride once.
I'd be happy for it anyway.
Uh, further questions, comments, Article sixteen, Socapie Rescue Expenses. Here are none, all those in favor of Article sixteen as read, eighty-three thousand dollars. Those opposed? Article sixteen is approved. Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate, ten thousand dollars to be placed in the Socapie Rescue Capital Reserve Fund. Do we have a motion? Move and second. Questions, comments? Jeff, we're surprised.
I know, um, Socapie Rescue Capital Reserve Fund, um, what does that exactly go towards?
I suspect they put it in the piggy bank when they need a new ambulance or something.
I just wondered if they're gonna put anything into the high school for, like, training for rescue.
Well, it doesn't say anything about that in there. So you have any info on that?
My name is Beverly Russell, I'm the treasurer for the rescue. I'm not a resident of the town, so-
Oh, okay. Just, just a formality.
Right.
Ordinarily, we need a vote of two-thirds of the, the residents of the town to let a out-of-towner speak. Uh, if there are no objections, I would, uh, ask that we let, uh, that we invite Beverly to speak. Here are no objections.
To answer his question, the capital reserve fund is held by the towns. And then we have a capital expense, like an ambulance, say, a new roof on the building, something that's a capital expense. We go to the four towns and we ask them for their portion of the money out of that account. It was set up before I got here, and the towns hold it, we do not. Um, as for the training at the high school, yes, we do have a program that we're trying to get off the ground, where we're training the kids, you know, to get them into EMS, because there is a shortage across the entire country. And I'm sure you've seen the articles where companies are doing this, where they're training the kids, and they're training the adults, are paying for the training, so that they can get more people in the field. That is not a capital expense. That is considered community outreach, and we take that out of the general fund, or we try and get grants, donations to cover that. Okay? Any other, yeah, is that, answered the question?
I would think so. Does anybody have any Socapie Rescue, um, budgeting questions? Well, we've got somebody right here.
Yeah, what, what happens year after year, ten thousand every year, and it's not spent? Does that accumulate?
Like, we have a new ambulance coming right now.
Okay.
And then there's another ambulance that we ordered before COVID that got hung up in the COVID thing that we're actually, is supposedly now in the pipeline coming, but they're gonna honor the pre-COVID price, because the price jumped a hundred thousand dollars on the ambulance.
Roughly, how much does this new one cost?
Which one, the first one or the second?
Well, the one you guessed, maybe.
The, 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 the one we're getting right now is three, about three hundred and fifty?
Three hundred and seven.
Three hundred and seven. The one that was ordered pre-COVID is two hundred and eighty-five?
Two hundred and eighty-one. Well, two hundred and eighty.
Two, somewhere around two hundred and eighty. I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but there was a significant bump. And they're not, it's not like this one's better than that one, it's just, it was a bump caused by COVID.
Interesting. Okay, by the way, that, uh, uh, the getting permission is a state law matter. That's not just norm being painted about. That's actually a state law, that we have to do that. Most, in most towns, especially if somebody's got something, information we need, we can, uh, put in unanimously. Do you have anything further on?
Uh, unless there's any questions.
Here are none. Okay, any further questions on, uh, on Article seventeen, ten thousand dollars to be placed in the Socapie Rescue Capital Reserve Fund Piggy Bank for future needs? Here are none, all those in favor of Article seventeen, ten thousand dollars as read. Those opposed? Article is approved. Article eighteen, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the sum of twenty-three thousand dollars for professional evaluation of real estate changes and maintenance of property records for the town for tax assessment purposes. Move. Move and second. Questions? Here are none, all those in favor of Article eighteen, twenty-three thousand dollars as read. Those opposed? Article is approved. Article nineteen, see if the town will vote to, oh, these are two, this is confusing. Article nineteen, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the sum of twenty-three thousand dollars to be placed in the revaluation reserve account. Move and second. Questions, comments? Here are none, all those in favor of Article nineteen, another twenty-three thousand dollars, as read. Those opposed? Okay, that's ambiguous, uh, at least visually. Article nineteen, show me hands, right straight in the air. All those in favor? Okay, I see more hands. Those opposed? Okay, the article is approved. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the following sums to cover health and sanitation expenses. That's solid waste, solid waste, garbage, recycling, for a total of three hundred thirty thousand dol-, uh, thousand, five hundred dollars. Do we have a motion? Move and second. Questions, comments?
Judy.
So if you look on page twenty-two to twenty-four in your town report, you'll see there's a recycling report. And you'll note that only nine point five percent of our trash was recycled this past fiscal year. So I just wanna thank everyone who faithfully recycles the first and the third Friday. Keep up the good work, but let's aim for ten percent next year. I forgot to include in the report that additional recycling is taking place thanks to a Salvation Army drop-off bin located behind the town office. The bin can hold three hundred to five hundred pounds of clothing, small items, et cetera. The Salvation Army reported that it's been emptied approximately fifty times so far, resulting in approximately two thousand, two hundred and fifty-five pounds of clothing, shoes, et cetera, that are being recycled. Thank you to those who have been using the bin, and thank you, Dan Hill, for getting this clear.
Anything further on Article twenty, uh, health and sanitation? Jeff?
So fifty-three, oh six, recycling expenses, five hundred dollars.
Yep.
If I just maybe vote yes, I can vote yes. And now I'm thinking, maybe we should put more money into it. And the reason being is, um, the money we, we increase it, and I know we can increase it, but increase it by the, they need to encourage more people, uh, by recycling, by putting more ads in the shopping guide, and even at the end of each select board, being the nine, the, uh, people that watch them, being five or, or recorded that, right of, we need to recycle. And seeing off the line cardboard out every single week, uh, and it's frozen third night every single week, uh, you see cardboard out, and we should get back into the oops ticket where they had continuing ways to recycle bins, and then they, you know, like give a tossy, and then say, oops, you, that's some cycle. Well, we need to get the oops ticket for cardboard and say, oops, you put off cardboard on the wrong week, and don't pick it up. I don't know, you know, but. We need, we need to recycle with third from the bottom. And, you know, we get all the time, with third from the bottom, uh, out of a lot of times, senior report, and every single year, we're off, close to the bottom. Every single year, I hear the same thing, oh, recycle people, but we're not recycling. And people, you know, you have to wake up and look at all the people that throw out the cardboard, that's a lot of waste. This is five hundred bucks, I'm, I'm talking about something that's five hundred bucks, but in reality, it's a lot more, people are paying for it specifically.
Okay, I think people will take that under advisement, Jeff. And again, a clarification, this is what's called an closed article, because it specifies an, an amount, and we cannot legally increase it at, at our meeting. If it was what's called an open article that begins to see what some of the town people, you can go anywhere up to a half a bazillion, but state law makes you stop at half a bazillion.
I just wanna let the people know that, that the people that do carry this room, that we need to get more people involved, and we have to spend more than five hundred, about five hundred dollars than, than this particular.
Perhaps, perhaps next cycle. Uh, Judy.
Have you noticed when you came in the door, there was a picture there of, uh, volunteers that collected the recycling for the electronic waste collection? That was in twenty-twenty-two. I think we're gonna be ready for another one. Um, and so I'm kind of, um, taking Jeff's suggestions seriously, because we'll be paying for that. We'll, and we'll probably do it for the Cornish again, that worked out really well. So, um, maybe that's something to be considered by this one, and I know we can't change it now.
Okay, further questions, comments on Article twenty?
Judy, would you like to mention Trittown? Is what happened there?
I wonder if that might make a difference, Jeff.
Well, uh-
Jesse developed it, so.
I was just giving over to make sure with electronic goods are not included at Trittown, as of yet. Same with, uh, of course, double checking in here, mattresses are not, or couches, bulky goods are not, as of yet. I believe they will be in the future, but not right this moment.
Also, for us, for us guys, Baldwin is in Trittown, founding member. Electronics is now five bucks a night.
Right. We have a, you know, we have a-
Yeah, I, I know, he has, joining us.
Yeah.
After all the years. Anyway, whether you put in a transistor radio or a television, it's five bucks a night.
So it looks like you will probably have to use some less.
Well, I, I think it's in the future, but, uh, not right this minute.
I didn't know you wanted to negotiate, thank you so much.
Well, I guess that's what you call it.
Great, great, I found an idea.
It's probably more testament to who's on the Trittown committee now, as to me, that would be my guess.
Jeff, real quickly?
Yes, I've already mentioned, uh, electronic waste in court, it used to be free, and they used to get tamed by a company. Uh, but since, um, charges aren't taken out of traction anymore, that's why we, we have to pay the electronics.
Yep. Further questions, comments on Article twenty? This is, uh, health and sanitation, basically solid waste, three hundred thirty thousand, five hundred dollars. All those in favor of Article twenty as read? Those opposed? The article is approved. Looking at Article twenty-one, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the following sums to cover winter road maintenance, sand and salt. That includes winter road maintenance contracts for four hundred sixty-seven thousand, sand and salt for a hundred and ten thousand. And a new thing, New Hampshire Department of Transportation Province Lake Road, forty-one thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars, for a total of six hundred eighteen thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars under this article. Do we have a motion? Move and second. Questions, comments? Yes, sir.
What does that New Hampshire thing cover? Does that cover the main section of one fifty-three?
Yes.
Exactly what it covers.
It's the main section.
Yeah, it's like one point.
I didn't wanna see us doing maintenance on New Hampshire Road. One fifty-three, that's cut, cutting the mains for ways to-
Yes.
I've got a couple of questions.
Speak right up, please. Huh? Speak right up, loud and clear.
One is on winter road maintenance. Living self, that's a section of town, and we got the same contract we had the previous three years. The problem is, it wasn't, he, he didn't do a very good job. A couple of things that are happening. Uh, one is, when, when they sign a contract to treat and file roads, I don't think there's any discrepancy between, wow, this, this road has ten people on it, this one has twenty, so if you do a better job on the one that's got twenty. I think the contract doesn't differentiate, differentiate at all between roads. And, and we allow this guy to get away with- guy to get away with picking and choosing what he does. And, and I know the selectmen are aware of this, and they had some issues with him. I, I just wish we had a little more oversight this winter on this guy, and I really think it's the road commissioner's job to do that. I don't think, I know you guys give out the contract phone numbers, or where we got the contract, and you say, oh, call us, and, and I have made a few calls to him, but I really, and I don't know what the job description of our road commissioner is, but I really think if we could hold the, these guys to the contract they signed, do the job they're supposed to, if we had someone provide an oversight during the winter. And, and that goes for both sections, but I'm, I'm just, I know we've had issues, and you guys are aware of it, and I heard it, if he, if he doesn't, well, maybe he won't have the contract for three years. And, and then the other thing is, I hope you guys look both contractors' equipment over before they start the season. I really think the guy got by doing three years' worth of plowing for us, and really didn't have the equipment that we required him to have. So I hate to go through another three years with this guy. We had school buses that couldn't get over the road, we had trash that couldn't be picked out, and that was, and, you know, I heard the excuse, well, call me if the roads are icy, that's not my job, he needs to get in his truck and drive around, or, or put his crews out there. And, and even the school bus group, those roads have got to be treated by six o'clock in the morning, he can't sat at six, he needs to sat two o'clock in the morning. So that, you know, we're gonna get somebody here, ask the kids to hurry on the school bus, if he continues, and he was no better the end of his third year than he was the first year. I called him on his third year of a road that saw him Saturday in the morning, one o'clock in the afternoon, I called him, and he forgot to plow. So I'm just saying, you know, I wish we had more oversight, and maybe the road commissioner could provide that, even if we have to pay for it, fine. So, with, something to consider.
I've got a few hands, I'm gonna call on them, but in the order I saw, wait, that's the way to that.
Yeah, I, of course, we've had a problem down in the south, on the Cram Road, and usually what I do is I call the road commissioner, I mean, there's no sense calling the town office, they may not even be there. But I have called the, the road commissioner, and they usually, I mean, I'm not saying they come right down, but usually there's somebody that comes by, now whether that was, you know, they were gonna come anyway, or the road commissioner put a call. I know if you call him, he usually responds, so I'm not gonna necessarily criticize him, I got other things I could criticize him for, but usually in the snow business, especially with the school buses, and they know when the school buses are running, they usually clean up their mess.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to say, I, I live right on the corner of Stonewood Lane and Maplewood Road, and I've watched them plow Dubai day after day in the storm. They run the main road lonely, very seldom, but the side road, I got to talk to one of the drivers one day, he said, we're told to do the main road first. So a big proportion of the population of passersby lives on those side roads, they have to be able to get out, buses have to go in and out, and so do the rest of you. I haven't plowed. Why don't forget the main road for a little while and test the side roads? I plowed for six hundred fifteen saw here in this town, and that's what I thought my plow was, was on the side road.
Further questions, comments on Article twenty-one, winter maintenance? Jeff?
Maybe this is for, for another time, but for the selectmen to hear, we probably should give the road commissioner a statement of some sort in the looking time, or his assistant to go out and check to see, see the roads instead of waiting for, what do you call it, that might be something in the future, maybe I'll have a workshop.
Okay, good. Anybody else on winter maintenance of roads? Are we ready to vote?
I got one other question, maybe.
Okay. No votes here, now's the time.
On the new item, Article, the Promise Lake Road.
Yep.
The question I get to the selectmen on this, this was given to, it's considered a town road now, because it only connects to town roads and New Hampshire Road, so they gave us this road, it's got a small bridge on it, it's paved, it's aligned. Two, one thing, because we got to plow this winter, and I'm gonna, I assume probably gonna pay New Hampshire to plow it again, they have in the past. Ask, not to, not to promote this, but our contractor that plows the south side of South End and Passas Field actually has to travel that road to access roads he has to plow. If, if he did, if he was a good con, you know, did a good job, I understand why you're going with New Hampshire, but, you know, he has to travel those roads with his trucks with the plows out to, to access a bunch of roads there. And the other question I got concerning this is, are we gonna get any more compensation from the state of Maine? That bridge has had some concrete repair work done probably ten, fifteen years ago. I've, I've been in that area for sixty, seventy years. They've never done any deckwork or anything on that. It's a, it's a paved, paved over the deck, I don't know if it's a structural steel, or precast deck, or what it is, but we're gonna have to pay, the half of that's in New Hampshire, half in Maine, we're gonna have to pay for that. The pavement, when it was turned over us, is not new pavement, it's got cracks in it now. We're gonna have some, put out some significant expenses coming on that road, and do we have to accept that road in the condition that they gave it to us?
Here's, I can tell they washed the ends of it. Ed went back and forth with them five, six times, more, I don't know, and negotiated, and all he got was, he gained us about a year and a half, they agreed to pay for it one more year, which was last year, and then we had to pay, what was it?
Half.
Half this year? We had to pay half this year, or we have to hold it? Anyways...
At least you're in the big part of it.
Yeah, and it saved a little money, but other than that, they, there you go, that's what you got.
That bridge costs hundreds of thousands of dollars, even if we're only paying for half of it.
I, I, I don't, so we got a plan on paying for it, but we gotta fix it, and here's I can tell.
I think we got a report on it, and I don't know what the report says.
Yeah, and we have two other bridges that the road commissioner and I went and met with a guy from the state on, both on Cram Road, one of them, he thought we had five years, and one he thought we might have another twenty years, and both of those are probably about a half a million dollars apiece. So that's just, that's as the prices are now, so say nothing about what the twenty year, in twenty years, what the twenty year one will cost, so we, it spoke of putting a, I'm not certain if it made it in here, a bridge reserve of, you know, ten thousand dollars wouldn't get you too far for five years on a half million dollar bridge, but you either do it now, or you, you either put money ahead for it now, or you pay for it and, you know, so, but I, I think something needs to be in there, we need a reserve.
I wish we'd got some money, would they, like a reserve money? I mean, they know what the condition is.
Yep.
They did a report, is it seventy-five percent deteriorated, or whatever.
I think the point has been made before. If we can move on real quick.
What road is he on?
What?
Which road is he on?
One fifty-three.
One fifty, moving.
Promise Lake Road.
Oh.
Okay, Article twenty-one is six hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars for winter road maintenance. Are we ready to vote? Here are no objections, all those in favor of Article twenty-one, yes, presented. Those opposed? Article twenty-one's approved. Article twenty-two, Save Town vote to raise appropriate follow amounts to cover highway and bridge expenses, and they are general maintenance and pavement and sealing for a total of four hundred ninety thousand dollars. Give a motion. All right. Move in second. What?
I got a comment.
Well, speak right up.
I shall. You'll notice the general maintenance has gone up seventy thousand, is that correct?
Yes, I believe so.
I, I thought it was fitting, for sure, it hadn't gone up, I don't believe, since I've been selectman, and the cost of, I don't know if anyone's in the business or anything, but the cost of equipment alone has gone up fifty percent in the last five years. We weren't, we were putting on Band-Aids with the money we had, we weren't taking on really any projects, and then this year goes to show that, I thought our roads were pretty last fall, I, they looked, I was on them a lot, they looked as good as I could remember, especially our dirt roads, and then look at where we are now with all washouts, we're right back square one. Now granted, LRAC will cover a, LRAC.
LRAC and FEMA.
FEMA will cover a lot of that, but it, I think this is appropriate, I, I vote, I mentioned we should add a hundred thousand to it, fifty percent, close to fifty percent, but seventy get added to it, so that number is higher than it has been previously.
Yes.
A couple of things, just because it happened over the area I live in. One, we had a big bad washout on one hill, and what originally caused that problem was a logging operation. It happened back last winter, washed out a small portion of the road, we put a cone, left a cone, didn't fix it, then, you know, we had major rain events. I don't think the logging outfit, I, I know Maya was aware of it, he had talked to him, they did nothing, we ended up going back on that road three times, I don't, wouldn't surprise me, we spent fifty, fifty thousand dollars there, or more. I just think we gotta be a little bit more aggressive, that, they should have, they should have fixed the first problem, and nothing's been done today, although we have gone in heavy, heavy, ripped wrapped it, and we, we just gotta be more aggressive.
Jesse?
I immediately, I was there the day after it happened, I called the forest ranger to come check it out, after we had the bad washout, for improper practice or whatever, that would be the sort of the police of it. Okay, he supposedly went right there, I never heard another word from him, I spoke to Maya, Maya verified that he knew he, the forest ranger was present, came over, saw it, nothing happened. So I don't know what avenue you would take to push it any further, I mean, there's, I, I'm not certain.
Well, that's it, I just think they cost, they cost a good, I think they cost us a ton of money.
Yep.
Somehow, I don't know what the, you know, what, what they can do, but why, they cost us money.
I agree.
Jeff, real quick?
Yep, real quick, fifty-four oh four, paving, sealing, that's a question for the road commissioner.
No.
Is the road commissioner here?
Do we have a road commissioner here?
No, I guess can't be answered by the...
Can't be answered by the road commissioner.
Right, okay.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I have a question, and probably don't for danger, that's out of the woods. Where is the road commissioner? I've never seen him out there on the job. We got two men on the nine section, two good working men, work together and do a good job, but the road commissioner, I've never seen him on the job. What does he do? We've always used to have road commissioners, but we're out there working with the crew.
Does he, any, the road commissioner has to be on that job?
Just saying. Jesse wants to answer that.
So the road commissioner is only hired to road commission, he, he could, he doesn't even have to, we could hire somebody to be road commissioner that doesn't have a piece of equipment, if they were good at delegating to other companies and take, you know, admitting on things. That's how I understand it. He happens to have the equipment himself, and I can assure you, we're probably getting as good a bang for our buck as any town, as near as I can tell.
We know we're getting good work with those tools, they're working all the time.
Yeah, they, they...
They're a good crew.
They do a great job together, I feel. He, I, I know he's, he is not there the one running the excavator, but he's the one picking where, picking and choosing what they're working on next, and he talk, you know, he's discussing with them, telling them where they should go next, so they, you know, they talk about it. I don't think anywhere it says he has to be the one on the, you know, on the job site.
Judy?
I have to laugh about it a little bit, every time you see him, they, they swat, swat jobs, they're, they run any piece of equipment they're rid.
Yeah.
They swat them.
Yeah.
You don't want to test the good deal.
Okay.
I don't see the boss on the job, what's the one?
If you want to see the work that Maya Larry does, come down to the Long Pond boat launch on Road Between the Ponds, I know Road Between the Ponds is horrible, but in that area, as part of a grant from the Long Pond Association to get rid of the algae boom, he did an amazing job to stop soil from washing into the pond, so I'm all for Maya. And one other thing, Mr. Moderator, I see that Article twenty-three is the next one, that's halfway through.
Well, we can't talk about that.
Can we take a break after that?
We can, we can take a break, because you guys all got steel seams, and they rehearsed that before. Article twenty-two, are we ready to vote? Jeff, something real brief?
Just one more thing, when you remove vegetation on the edges of the road, that causes erosion, so I've seen firsthand where glue is taken, our grass has been taken out to replace it with rock back, and then it just washes down to the, and the gullies, I, I just think that somehow we need some more education on how to take care of the edges of the road.
There are, I'm sure there are what's called best practices for that stuff. Okay, let's, let's vote on Article twenty-two, shall we? Article twenty-two, See if the town vote to raise appropriate follow amounts to cover highway and bridge expenses, it's a total of four hundred ninety thousand dollars. All those in favor? Those opposed? The article is approved. Now, we'll, we'll do Article twenty-three, and unless there's serious objection, we'll take a five or ten minute break, I'll, when we get through with Article twenty-three, we'll announce a, a time to break and, and get back, and everybody can stretch their muscles and bones and stuff. Article twenty-three, See if the town vote to authorize the selectmen to appropriate up to ninety-seven thousand five hundred and sixty dollars for the maintenance of roads from current fiscal year LRAC, Local Road Assistance Program, and it's a state-funded road maintenance program. Under this article, it's proposed that thirty-two thousand five hundred and sixty would be used for paving and sealing, and designated road maintenance and repair in the amount of sixty-five thousand for, again, for a total up, and it says up to ninety-seven thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. Do we have a motion?
Move.
Move in second, questions, comments? Jeff?
Did they list the, the roads that, in LRAC, I noticed a few years ago, they listed all the roads that guard assistance.
It says, okay, it says designated, is there a designation somewhere?
There is, we give them a report of the roads and how much we spend on each road.
Yep. Do you have plans for what's upcoming?
I don't know.
Okay. Further questions, comments, Article twenty-three? Okay, here are none, all those in favor of Article twenty-three in the amount of ninety, up to ninety-seven thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, please indicate by raising your hand. Those opposed? The article is approved. Okay, Judy has recommended, usually Dan makes the recommendation, but Judy be her to it. Let's take a, you want a five minutes or ten minutes? What's the general consensus?
No, five won't work.
Five won't work, ten minutes, we will reconvene, the, the meeting is still in order, we will reconvene when the big hand is on eight, okay? They have kind of got something to hand me up, you know, love.
We can dig our hand in.
That's it. Let me just take a, we don't have a game or a vote, I don't want anybody to miss out on ours, bud.
It's just Jeff.
Come on, Jeff.
Come on, Jeff, hold things up, yeah?
You hold like the parade.
Well, we all need to be in parade, no? Well, some of us, just some of us. All right, we'll be back in session, still in order and all that. We'll jump to... Uh, we'll jump to, or we'll move in progression. Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate to sum of five thousand dollars plus any state or individual reimbursements to cover the general assistance program. Do we have a motion?
Oh.
Seconded.
Move, seconded. Questions, comments on Article twenty-four? Jeff?
How are we doing with general assistance? Anybody on account of how many people come in? Very few.
Yeah. Okay, numbers are down surprisingly.
To say, I've talked to, there were very few in the last year.
We've got hardy souls here in Passasville.
No, they're just out of the way.
That's it, they can't find us.
Can't find us, that's it.
That's all right. Okay, are we ready to vote on Article twenty-four? Okay, Article twenty-four, five thousand dollars for general assistance. All those in favor? Those opposed? The article's accepted. Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate following sums to cover cultural and recreation expenses. There are the Keys of Falls Library, the Saukupi Valley Rep Council, and Passasville Port and Historical Society for a total of ten thousand five hundred dollars. Do we have a motion?
No.
Seconded.
Move, seconded. Questions, comments? Jeff?
Mike, I have anything to do with the library, but.
It has to.
Um, it does. How does the library get valued at over a million dollars for building?
It's on the national records.
I was just wondering.
Can anybody answer that real quick?
Over a million dollars.
We don't have an answer to that.
Yeah, that's not a town valuation, you realize.
Right, it's just on the books as, as tax deferred, yeah, million dollar building. Two thousand and ninety was a hundred and ninety thousand.
Could Jeff, inasmuch as that's not pertinent to this appropriation, and the answer seems to be, answer seems to be nebulous, although it would be interesting. We'll, uh, we'll move on. Further questions, comments on Article twenty-five? Here are none. All those in favor of Article twenty-five, ten thousand five hundred dollars, as read? Those opposed? The article is approved. Article twenty-six, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate following sums to cover social service expenses. They are York County Community Action, Visiting Nurses Association, which is now called Main Health Care, uh, Agency on Aging, Karen and Lilith, Red Cross Lifewake, St. Matthew's Food Pantry, Smooth Fudders, the Grateful Undead, Main Public Radio and TV at the South River Festival. Total appropriation under this article will be ten thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Move, seconded. Questions, comments? Yes.
Um, I would like to bring out my concerns that the Southern Maine Agency on Aging has asked for twenty-five hundred dollars, which is significantly more than all the other agencies have asked for. Um, I look at York County Community Action that is significantly involved in this area.
Can you, can you speak up a little?
Yeah, I look at York County Community Action that's significantly involved in the area out here, and that has spent five hundred, uh, five hundred, almost five hundred and eight thousand dollars, and they're asking for twelve hundred and fifty dollars, um, and for, from this town alone. And the Southern Maine Agency on Aging is asking for twenty-five hundred. St. Matthew's Food Pantry fed six hundred and thirty people, two hundred and eleven families. They're asking for twelve hundred dollars. Um, the Southern Maine Agency on Aging served forty-three people out here. I was a previous employee of the Agency on Aging, and I'm familiar with the services that they provide out here. And they're really minimal services. So I would just like to make a recommendation that at most we provide them with a thousand dollars, um, at most, for the services that they provide out here. I think in this day and age, um, when we have a lot of expenses for this town, to provide them with twenty-five hundred dollars is a lot of money. We're gonna get the same services from them, whether we provide them with twenty hun, twenty-five hundred dollars or whether or not we provide them with fifty dollars.
Okay, any, Jeff?
Uh, I'd like, I'd like to point, and maybe we should motion to move Article fifty-seven oh four and vote on reducing that amount to the suggested amount, twelve hundred dollars, you said?
I actually said a thousand, at most.
Okay, let's reduce it to a thousand dollars. We can vote, we should amend that, change it to a thousand dollars.
Okay, so you wish to make an amendment?
On that, on that, on that one, I.
Okay, you're amending Article twenty-six, and it's the fifty-seven oh four account, Southern Maine Agency on Aging. You're amending the twenty-five hundred to one thousand?
One thousand dollars, yeah.
Is that what you say?
Yeah, I think it's an educated, uh, opinion, yeah.
Okay, is there a second to Jeff's amendment? Did you second it?
Yes.
Okay. Now we can discuss the amendment specifically, so, and, and then we'll vote on the amendment, and then we'll vote on the whole article. So, um, the discussion now is to change fifty-seven oh four Agency on Aging from twenty-five hundred to a thousand bucks. Uh, comments on that? I saw you.
Not on that one, but more discussion on, can I discuss now that I agree with what's been said? But I just have a general question before we do that? How?
Uh, well.
Do, do we just need to vote on the amendment first?
Yeah, we need, we need to discuss the amendment and things directly pertinent to it, vote on it, and then we can get back into Article twenty-six as a whole.
Thanks.
David?
I have two questions. First is, can somebody explain to us what, for instance, the difference is between the services from Southern Maine Agency on Aging and York County Community Action? And second of all, this was brought before the Budget Committee, and the Budget Committee voted for this, and I'm curious why they did that if now I'm hearing from a budget member that.
Jeff?
Um, I, I said, I'm not part of the Budget Committee, but I did sit on, on the meeting, and I had a question also when I saw this amount, because I've dealt with them in trying to get services that were unavailable out here. So I went back and read their letter of request, which to me sounded, oh, okay, well, they do this, and I do that, and they serve these people and give rest and care. Um, so it sounded, you know, it sounded reasonable. And then in speaking with somebody who's worked with the agency, and realizing what their funding was and where their money came from and for, I thought, well, I think the letter's just slightly misleading in a town our size. Would other towns, much bigger than our towns, like Kenny Bar, give that amount, but not, you know, not this town, not towns of our size? Cornish, a thousand, and I'm done speaking, because I think Pam can speak better to that.
So, I used to work for the Agency on Aging, and I can tell you where all the money comes from. They get a lot of federal money that helps pay for the Meals on Meals program, the community cafe comes in that Title III C money. A lot of the respite services that they refer to in the letter comes from state funding from the caregiver respite program. So I agree that the amount can be reduced. And I just, what do we, do we look at what other towns are giving? I've only, I've only been here for a couple of years, so, do we look at what other towns of similar size are giving before we decide on what we agree? Or do we just look at the letter and say, oh, that sounds good? Just, that's, that's just a general question, and I would definitely, I agree with you on that.
That's a Budget Committee question. Is there somebody from the Budget Committee that can specifically deal with that briefly?
Yes, briefly. I am on our Budget Committee. A lot of these letters get sent to us over the years, and we usually give the same amount, oh, we gave them that much last year, we'll give this much this year. Um, the Budget Committee also was saying, maybe these people should come in and explain to us. And this was one of those things where they probably should have came in and explained it to us. Uh, this would be great if we could just amend this to a thousand dollars.
Well, that's, that's on the, on the floor right now. Yes.
I just, David, I'd like to answer your question about York County Community Action based, based on what, what I know, which may not be everything. York County Community Action does fuel assistance for people. They provide transportation for people. Um, they have housing assistance for people. They provide daycare resources for people. Um, they, they provide numerous resources, and they're much more active in the community. Um, and they provide for all ages as well. Um, I'm sure they provide a lot more than that in addition, that I'm not familiar with.
Yes.
I think that that's a great idea, Jeff, that they come to the town meetings. I happen to know that the Southern Maine Agency on Aging has, in the past, sent people to town meetings. They may not have been here, but they should be.
I can tell you that from my experience as a moderator in various towns, these, uh, public service NGO-type agencies who do send a representative to the town meeting, and we always give them permission to speak, they may sound a heck of a lot better than them that don't show up. Um, okay, so we have a, we have the, uh, the Jeff amendment to change fifty-seven oh four Southern Maine Agency on Aging from twenty-five hundred to a thousand bucks. Further discussion on this matter? Okay, we're voting on the, on the amendment right now, not the whole article. All those in favor of the amendment to change Southern Maine Agency on Aging amount from twenty-five hundred to a thousand? All those in favor? Those opposed? Okay, the amendment, I gotta write that down. The amendment is approved. Now, we can get back to Article twenty-six as amended. Is, are there further questions, comments, or comments?
Um, speaking to have a representative for the social services, um, I am a member of the Grateful Undead, as are several other people in here. Um, this is a new request to the town. We are a local group of volunteers. We are now a five oh one C three, so we're a nonprofit. And because of that, we have to have liability insurance. We provide rides to medical appointments, dialysis treatments, shopping errands. We have a handy helpers program for doing small repairs for, for people in our community. Um, we had to pay for criminal record background checks on all of us that volunteer, and for those who care, mine was okay. We also have asked for this amount from all the other towns, and have been given it already. So that's why we are asking for five hundred. Thanks.
Insurance comes under the concept of no good deed shall ever go unpunished. Uh, further questions, comments on Article twenty-six as amended? Yes?
Okay, I have a question, Beth, I've got seven hundred and fifty dollars. How, does anyone in here with, with the budget know how much of that, percentage of that money goes for, uh, um, yeah, administration services? What percentage?
Jeff, what do you know about the Red Cross, what they do with that money?
Absolutely nothing. I don't know anything about it. All I know is they publicly submitted the letter, they asked for some money, everybody feels Red Cross, you know, turned around forever, and we just, you know, it's like salute, but. But I don't know what, I, she's right, you know, administration fees, I don't know.
Dan?
Uh, also on the Budget Committee, uh, and for a long time. Uh, in the past, the Red Cross has been asking for a lot more than this, and hoping it would cut them back quite ways. Partially because they seldom show up here. When they do, they do a great job, but it's not that often. And we really felt like they were getting a lot of funding elsewhere, and they were asking for more than.
Judy, can you add to that? Or subtract?
My suggestion was somebody Google it, and you'll find out.
Say what?
Google how much their respite they get from that money.
I know. For crap, they get over twenty percent. Anybody that gets over twenty percent for funding a care facility or whatever, it's not using that money properly. It should be ten percent or less. And that is a true fact.
Okay, further discussion on, on, Jeff?
Well, there's a one on here in fifty-six oh nine. We should probably amend that, cut it down to five hundred. Baby steps.
Okay, is that, are you, are you wishing that amendment?
I'm suggesting that fifty-six oh nine Red Cross, with seven hundred and fifty dollars, be reduced to five hundred.
Okay, we have another amendment on the floor. Fifty-six oh nine, uh, the amendment, no, we don't have the amendment on the floor, because I haven't heard a second. Okay, now we have an amendment on the floor to take fifty-six oh nine, the Red Cross, and change seven fifty to five hundred bucks.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, sir.
Just one thing to think about, uh, just a different perspective, not agreeing or disagreeing with either anyone amending up or down. Uh, if, if, if we have a professional person come from the Red Cross for, say, one eight-hour day with a professional vehicle, whichever that is, whatever that might be, that's probably would cost seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's one day. Uh, I just want to put that out there, that I, I'm certain that they get big funding from all kinds of other places, but seven hundred and fifty dollars to get a professional person out here for a day, call it two days. I mean, we must receive two days' worth of service from one person with a vehicle, which will easily eat up seven hundred and fifty dollars. I just wanted to say that.
Okay, we're, we're discussing the amendment now, the Red Cross amendment. Further discussion specifically on the amendment? Do you have your hand up?
Yeah, um, why would we have to pay them seven hundred and fifty? Isn't that supposed to come out of their fund?
That's a good question, I don't know, but you know.
It is, yeah. That's why they, and I donate it to them, is to pay for these services to these towns. The town shouldn't have to pay for that service. It's just like, I'll give you an example. When we were in Ohio years ago, they had a horrific tornado over this small town. Red Cross came in, and instead of giving the people that were there working to clean the mess up, to make these people feel, um, better about the situation, they were charging these people for a stadium wage. Now that's, to me, that's not right. They were charging the workers, they were charging the people that just lost everything. Does that make sense?
Okay, uh, Jen?
Just a little quickly, excuse me.
Jen?
We know.
Just, just a minute, Jen is recognized to speak at the moment, nobody else?
I wonder if you could explain again about the administrative fees?
I, when I worked on the Budget Committee in Hampton in Hampshire, anybody that asked the money, uh, for donation, anything over twenty percent, uh, what they took out for administration fees was not right. It should be a lot less than that, ten percent. It's, people donated this money to help people. They didn't donate this money to give this person a nice hotel to stay in while they were someplace they had to be. Or, one instant, when this tornado happened, everybody was, was putting in clothing and, you know, calling the Red Cross. And I did myself, and I had just had my youngest son. I had baby clothes he couldn't get into. Everything still had price tags on it. Do you know they wouldn't take them? They told me, no, you have to give the money to them so they can go buy. And the lady across the street from us, her husband was a chief officer.
If, if we could summarize this, this is going on a little.
It won't take long. She worked with the Red Cross. When those clothes came in, those people that were working for the Red Cross bought first dibs on the clothes, not the people who needed them. No, that's not right.
Okay, we have, we have an amendment on the floor to change fifty-six oh nine Red Cross appropriation from seven fifty to five hundred. Is there any further discussion before we vote on the amendment? Here are none. All those in favor of a, another amendment? The amendment to change the fifty-six oh nine appropriation from seven hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars? All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Those opposed? The amendment is approved. Okay, we have now a, a Article twenty-six with two amendments. Um, we've taken fifteen hundred and two hundred and fifty, uh, so. So we've taken seventeen fifty out of it so far. Further discussion on Article twenty-six as doubly amended? Okay. Somebody, uh, somebody got a number structure and can tell, can subtract? Say, say again?
I have nine thousand three hundred eighty-three.
Okay, ten, ten thousand six hundred and thirty-three.
That was seventy-four.
No, we're on Article twenty-six. Article, okay, ten thousand, who's got a number structure? David, you have it?
I can't guarantee it's right, but I've got eight-eight-eight-three.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay, eight-eight-eight-three. Okay. Article twenty-six has been doubly amended. And by the way, just, uh, you can't amend an amendment, but we can have two amendments on an article. Interesting thing of moderator law. Anyway, Article twenty-six as doubly amended in the amount of eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. All those in favor? Then as opposed, the article is approved as doubly amended. Article twenty-seven. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate following sums to cover miscellaneous expenses. They are mowing and care of veterans, graves, and cemetery repairs in an amount to the West Day Post of the American Legion. Do we have a motion? Move and second. Discussion. Here or none? All those in favor of Article twenty-seven is read. Those opposed, the article is approved. Article twenty-eight, see if the town will vote to roll over unexpended cemetery funds into a cemetery maintenance reserve fund. This would be a new reserve account. This fund would be utilized along with newly approved fiscal yearly funds to perform work on cemeteries, and this article will remain in effect, if approved, until rescinded by the town meeting. Do we have a motion? Move and second. Discussion, questions? Yes?
I think part of this was because of me. I'm the president of East Parsons Field Cemetery, which is private, not town-funded, and I had gone to the town to see about help. And we're a small group, and the only money we make is when we sell a grave. And between the upkeep, the mowing, the mending of fences, and the gravestones, and the removal of tree debris and everything else, we went to the town to see if we could get some help. So, it, it's a lot of work, a lot of care. So this is why I would like to see that even the private cemeteries get part of this money that comes up. Some are saying, no, because it's private, but that's not quite fair. We have veterans. We have longtime residents in this cemetery that lived there all their lives. My whole family is there. So I, I just think, and I've been a resident my entire life.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, well, thank you, to this point, I'm sad. So I think we should be able to get part of this funding.
David?
Yeah, um, the answer, two parts of your comments. First of all, it was our understanding that monies could not, town monies could not be spent on private cemeteries. However, there is state statute, we have found out, that does allow us to give money for care of cemeteries that have veterans, graves in them. And as a matter of fact, if there's a cemetery association, we can potentially give money to cemeteries that don't have veterans' graves in them, as long as they were created before eighteen eighty. All right, that being said, um, this article was put in place because of things more on the town cemeteries. However, and I'll get back to that in a minute. We are considering what methodology we would use to disperse funds fairly among private cemeteries if we went that route. There are over a hundred and sixty private cemeteries, which, thanks to West, there's no longer here, uh, we can identify. And some of those, you can't even find. If you didn't know they were there, you wouldn't know they were there, period. So how do we distinguish, how do we determine where we're gonna put the money? That's an issue that the board's gonna have to grapple with, and we'll be dealing with that. This article was more a case of, we need a new fence. We needed a new fence at the North Parsons Field Cemetery for, I don't know, fifteen years, I think? Yeah. What we had, what we allocate annually is probably not enough to cover the expense of that fence. So we were looking at rolling this over into a reserve and being able to replace things like that fence. And then any additional monies, any leftover monies, are monies we can look at dispersing to private cemeteries.
Okay, I, I did listen to the town, the selectman's meeting when Danielle brought this up, and in that conversation, it was that you had an allocation of seven thousand dollars, and the previous year you'd only used, like, twenty-two hundred dollars for that. If, if there is a private, I mean, this isn't a family private cemetery. This is a town private cemetery. If there is an association, how do they know you have money that is available? If, I mean, I didn't know that you had money in a fund.
We don't have money in a fund until now. And we didn't know that we could give it to private cemeteries, okay? And there, in terms of the law, there's no distinction between what you're calling a town private cemetery and a family private cemetery.
Yeah, they all start as a family cemetery, and then they just, you know, they grow.
Further discussion on Article twenty-eight? Jeff?
Um, just on, on the cemetery, the one on, on one sixteen, Derriville. We all know there's some trees that need to be cut down. I knocked them with riddens already. Of course, it costs a lot of money to cut those trees down, so. Just a point of interest. We have the fence, and we do have trees that are gonna topple and probably break us, so. Priority.
And just one other thing. How would I go about requesting if it's possible?
We need to get the whole mechanism in place. We don't know at this point, though. It will probably be a while before we know what we can do.
And then how would I know when it is in place?
You're going to the selectman frequently.
Or, or give a call. I mean, you know, we'll know here. Somebody here will know.
Okay, Article twenty-eight as read. Roll over unexpended cemetery funds into a cemetery maintenance reserve fund. All those in favor? Those opposed? The article is approved. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate to sum of two thousand two hundred dollars for the town's share of funding the Courtesy Boat Inspection Station at the Long Pond Boat Ramp. Do we have a motion? Second. Move and second. Judy?
So I'm the coordinator of the Courtesy Boat Inspection Program at the Boat Ramp on Long Pond, and I usually make a report every year. Thank you for your funding. So due to our rainy summer, there was much less use of the Long Pond Boat Ramp as compared to other summers. However, there were three hundred and sixty-eight inspections, and the breakdown is, by the way, kayaks beat motorboats. I can't believe that. Hundred ninety-five kayaks, hundred twenty-four motorized boats, thirty-five cattle boards, twelve canoes, two jet skis. Our Courtesy Boat Inspectors logged in two hundred and twenty-one hours between Memorial Day and the end of August. The Long Pond Association thanks the Parsons Field residents for continuing to fund this very important project, keeping Long Pond free of invasive plants.
Further comments on Article twenty-nine, Long Pond Courtesy Boat Inspection? Here or none? All those in favor of Article twenty-nine, twenty-two hundred, as read? Those opposed? The article is approved. Article thirty, see if the town will vote to appropriate the refunded fees from snowmobile registrations to be split equally between the Suckapee Valley Snow Drifters Incorporated Snowmobile Club and the Route Eleven Streakers Snowmobile Club. Set some to be the amount refunded by the state for the prior fiscal year amounts to six hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety cents placed for use to purposes such as trail maintenance, construction of purchases, purchase of equipment and materials for maintenance and construction of trails, which are open to the public, where you're charged during the winter season. Do we have a motion? Move and second. Discussion. Here or none? All those in favor of Article thirty is read. Those opposed? The article is accepted. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to appropriate any franchise fees received in the prior fiscal year from Spectrum Chartered to be given to TV Two for the purchase and maintenance of equipment and for operating costs. The amount we're looking at is six thousand three hundred ninety dollars and fifty-four cents. Do we have a motion? Move and second. Discussion. Here or none? All those in favor of Article thirty-one, TV Two, as read? Those opposed? The article is approved.
I think TV Two.
There's TV Two right there. Article thirty-two. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate six thousand dollars, and that's broken out into two thousand dollars each, and to authorize the selectmen on behalf of the town to enter a mutual aid agreement with the town of Newfield Fire Department, town of Limerick Fire Department, and the town of Effenham's Fire Department for fire protection and Effenham's Rescue for emergency first response medical care for the western area of Parsons Field for the ensuing year. Do we have a motion? Move and second. Discussion. Here or none? All those in favor of Article thirty-two, six thousand for mutual aid, as read? Those opposed? The article is approved. Article thirty-three, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate fifteen thousand dollars to be placed in the municipal building capital repair fund. Move and second. Discussion. Here or none? All those in favor of Article thirty-three is read? Those opposed? Article is approved. Article thirty-four, see if the town will vote to appropriate forty thousand dollars for the Bartlett Doe Fund. And parentheses, credited to the relief account by vote of the town on March nine, nineteen fifty-three. Had the man who's still alive remembers that famous day and year. For the support of the common schools and set some to be applied as partial payment in school assessment for the ensuing year. Do we have a motion?
I think.
Move and second. Go fight, go fight. Move and second. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
I was alive at that time. Not holding off the vote, but I remember being at town meeting that day.
Really? Excellent, excellent. I was alive too, but I don't, I was still wearing three-cornered britches, I think. Okay. Article thirty-four, forty thousand dollars. All those in favor? Those opposed? The article is approved. Okay, there are debates here. Article thirty-five, see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen on behalf of, I'm getting to my staples here. On behalf of the town to accept or refuse donations and bequests. Accept or refuse donations and be requests that may be offered to the town, and if accepted, to spend the same in accordance with the wishes of the donor. Such expenditures shall be in addition to any other amounts raised or appropriated elsewhere for a similar purpose. Do we have a motion? Move and second. Comments? Jeffrey?
I just have a question. So the town can accept donations from, from citizens?
Yes, you can, like, bequeath your fortune or something.
There's, there's three outstanding tax bills that have been taken to get off the books. Is that, would the town, people under the tax donation?
If, if, David?
Well, I don't wanna speak for the tax collector, but being the prior tax collector, I'll say that anybody can pay anyone's taxes.
Okay, I'd like to do that.
Okay, that's all. Do we, treasurer's office or tax collector's office?
Thank you.
Further discussion on Article thirty-five? Here or none? All those in favor of Article thirty-five is read? Those opposed? Article is accepted. Article thirty-six, see if the town will vote to establish sixty days after commitment as the date when in twenty-twenty-three, real estate and personal property taxes will be due and payable, and to establish a rate of seven percent interest to be charged on all unpaid taxes as of that date. And we have the information that the maximum allowable rate set by the state domain is eight percent. Do we have a motion? Discussion. Here or none? All those in favor of Article thirty-six is read? Those opposed? The article is accepted. Article thirty-seven, to see if the town will vote to establish a rate of two percent discount to be allowed on all real estate and personal property taxes paid in full within thirty days of commitment? Move and second. Questions, discussion? Uh, here or none? All those in favor of Article thirty-seven is read? Those opposed? Every year I bring this up at the bottom of town meeting, and we don't get those thinking discount. Article thirty-eight, to see if the town will vote to use the tax lien mortgage method for the collection of unpaid taxes after the expiration of eight months from the commitment date, and maximum allowable, and, and eight months after the commitment date, and to establish seven percent as the rate of interest to be charged on all liens paid in full. Maximum allowable rate set by the state is eight percent per annum. The municipal officers shall use the special sale process required by thirty-six MRS, section seven forty-three C, for qualifying homestead property if they choose to sell any tax lien for closed property to anyone other than the former owners. Do we have a motion? Move and second. Discussion. Here or none? All those in favor of Article thirty-eight as presented? Those opposed? Article is accepted. Thirty, Article thirty-nine, see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to accept prepayment of taxes. The amount collected not to exceed the previous year's taxes. Interest on any prepayment will be zero percent. Move and second. Discussion. Here or none? All those in favor of Article thirty-nine is read? Those opposed? Article is accepted. Article forty, see if the town will vote to establish seven percent as the rate of interest to pay on taxes that have been overpaid in excess of the full amount assessed in accordance with MRSA Title Thirty-Six, section five oh six A. Do we have a motion? Move and second. Discussion. Here or none? Those in favor of Article forty is read? Them as opposed? Article is accepted. Article forty-one, see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to use monies from the overlay account for real estate and personal property tax discounts and tax abatements, including any interest accrued thereof? Move and second. Discussion. Here or none? Article forty-one as read? Those in favor? Those opposed? Article forty-one is approved. Okay. Article forty-two, see if the town will vote to close a portion of Hasty Road from above eighty-five Hasty Road to Middle Road to winter maintenance and passage from November one to April thirty of the following year for the next ten years. Those in favor? I'm sorry, I need a, I need a motion. Okay, now, jumped the gun, didn't I? Uh, discussion, yes, sir.
After you go by the populated, you know, here it's city, right? Okay.
The same section they, they had.
Same section used as old years ago, yeah. Same section used as old years ago, yeah.
Further discussion on Article forty, want to close in the Hasty Road? Yes.
Me?
No, no.
Okay.
You know, I've seen it when it's closed, then the plowing contractor wanted it open because it said it saved you money from going across the road versus traveling around. There's a lot of anticipation, this is going to save the town a lot of money. I don't have a preference either way, probably towards the close, closing it. But I, I don't think it's going to save any money. You're not going to get money back, I doubt, from the contractor for the next three years. And beyond that, whether they'll reduce their bid because of this, I don't know. But the, the other thing is, what, what, I know what's going to happen there because I've seen it in the past, you, if you're putting up signs, they're going to go across it anyway. And from November one on, deer hunters and everything, so you're really not going to save any money. There's some people that think we're going to save money, and we're not. I'll get back there in a minute. Jeff, I saw your hand first.
Yeah, I think after to get this road proposed a long time ago, when it first came to me, they proposed it, road commissioner, and I said, you know, it makes a better snowmobile trail than a road. And this is just a two miles going through the plantation. I presented this to the legislature years ago, and it's, so it wasn't a significant amount of money, but it was like five thousand dollars. But after ten years, if five thousand dollars times ten adds up to some money. We will save money because we won't have to regrade it as hard if we don't plow it. And if we make it a snowmobile trail, people will respect it more than, you know, pickup trucks will say, oh, I'm not going to go on it because it's a snowmobile trail. So if we post it as a snowmobile trail, the trucks will respect it, and they won't be mudding it up in the, in the, in the, in the wet season.
And then Carolyn in a minute, yes, sir.
If it's, if it is voted to be closed down, and that will be starting with the winter season, right on to month season, good.
Yeah, it says November first through the thirtieth of April, yeah. Carolyn, I saw your hand first.
What's the question? What direction would, like fire trucks and ambulances be coming from to go someplace where the road houses? Would that stop anything from the, or is the way?
They don't, they won't go across Hasty Road even when it's in good shape.
They wouldn't do it, okay, okay.
It ain't that good, huh? Yes, well, we have another good job, was in the winter, so they won't go that way, they never have. As far as them not traveling on that road, they're going to, they're going to go on that road. You're going to have just as much maintenance cost in the spring. I lived there, they go right by the signs. No liability to the town because the road's closed. They get stuck, they get themselves pulled up. You're going to have as much maintenance in the, in the spring, after month season as you have had. You're not going to save a dime.
Danielle, you have your hand up?
Um, there was some question in the clerk's office.
Just let Danielle speak.
Um, just some discussion, I can cross the office here, um, about where the road is if it did pass, where it's going to be closed, because you've got your snowmobile people. Where are they going to park their trucks? Where are they going to unload snowmobiles? That's in the same area as the plow truck turnaround and trash turnaround. So if you do close it, I don't, I used to live on Hasty Road, and I traveled that to come to the office. I don't have a preference. But I am concerned that that area is going to get clogged with snowmobile people, and then our plow contractors are going to have a hard time turning around, and also the trash will have a turnaround. So I think that needs to be looked at if it is closed.
Okay, Jeff?
Well, for snowmobile stuff, years ago it was closed, and it didn't really pose an issue. I think the snowmobiles found a place to buy, and the snowplow trucks had a place to turn around, so we're just going back to, to the way it was. And, and, and we both save some money. We have to start saving money, people, because if we don't, we're just going to keep, you know, task force is going to go off, and people are going to complain, and we've got little baby steps, you know, close it now, see how it works. It doesn't have to be closed permanently, as, as everybody knows, if we can put it back in anytime we want, but we'll save, we'll save some money. Obviously, when you drive down, what number's your car's from one thirty-three, the anxious charge has forty-one thousand dollars to do two miles, and this is two miles through the woods, so.
We've got a couple more people, yes, sir.
Why can't they just block the road off so people won't, so they can't, it's barricaded, people can't pass it. Newfield doesn't have that on some of the roads if they close them. You put big rocks there, they can't move.
Yes, sir.
You're talking about November first, you know how many people hunt over on that plantation?
Yeah.
That's going to be a problem then.
Usually in November, the road, unless you get, oh, the road is passing.
But they hunt over there, they're, they're going to pass it. What they're going to do is they're going to go around whatever you've got on my land, and they're going to go around it.
Yeah.
I say, put a sign out, let them do whatever they're going to do, which they're going to. Years ago, they used it just for snowmobiles, that's not going to be the case now. But the other question, are we going to try and get out of the, I know Fitz already went out on town on the plowing. We can ask if we can get some money back. I doubt if we get it because the contracts are already awarded, but do you think you could ask, I mean, is it worth asking? I mean, it's what, a mile or two a road or something?
So, I guess there's no reason we couldn't ask them, and I think I know what the answer's going to be. The contract, they gave us a contract price, yes, we're reducing the mileage. A couple of them actually stated, they didn't even write down a total number, they just wrote, I can't remember, six, eight dollars a mile, or something of the sort. Those guys, we could certainly have said, if that was what their contract was, I, I would have a light stand on that says, you said X amount, so much a mile, well, we're taking two miles out of that. If it was eight dollars a mile, it was sixteen thousand dollars theoretically that you're not, you know? But I don't, we didn't pick anybody that did a per mile price. They gave us a price to plow the town, now that was up to us to, so we tried doing this last year here before, and it didn't, we tried talking or whatever, and we found out we had to have a vote, because we wanted to do it before we, or plow contracts came up to bid, for this reason, thinking if it was going to affect it, then it would. Well, we, there was some state statute or something.
We had to have a public hearing, we took that in our hand.
Right, so here we are now. It would have been beneficial if it was going to be before the fact, but.
I'm all for closing, but I mean.
We haven't heard from you.
Yep. Yep, I live right over there, I use Hasty Road a lot, I hunt there, I drive through all, all the time, and just kind of thinking what Danielle said, you know, pass that last house to that parking lot there on the left where people unload their snowmobiles, their ATVs, it's access to the ATV trails and everything right there. And that seems like an ideal place to plow up to there. At least people can have access, it's not that much further than the last house. People would be able to unload their vehicles, be off the road, be out of the way, have access to all of the roads, and then that would still leave probably a mile in three quarters that wasn't plowed all the way up to the middle road. And there's lots of times where there is no snow, maybe September, January, you can really get it, cold spring, ground's frozen, you can drive right through there in the winter, no problem. So my question is, when you say you're not going to maintain it or plow it, does that mean you can't use it even if there's no snow and the ground's frozen, you can't go in there? Or is it going to be, I don't like his idea of being blocked off always, I mean, I'm not for that, but is it just not going to be maintained and plowed, or you can't go through there at all even if, even if we have a snowless window?
I can't, I can't speak legally to that fact, but I've read a bunch of signs in New Hampshire that say this road is, you know, they're metal signs, it's class something road, that says this road is closed to winter maintenance, you pass it, you're on risk type thing. So if someone goes down there and crashes, they can't sue the town.
Right, yeah, okay, so you can't.
Unless you block it off permanently, which is really tough to do because it's out of the way, it's out of the public eye, people are just going to do what they want anyways. I was a kid, I was sixteen, I drove around the gate, and so wasn't everybody else that says, oh, I can easily make it through, there's no reason why not, they're going to go around the gate and go through anyway.
Yeah, it just wouldn't seem fair for ten years to clo, to close that off every winter, especially if some winters had no snow, people wanted access to the plantation, and now it's blocked off.
It doesn't have to be for ten years, though.
Right, it, it's just that, the ten years is if it doesn't get brought back up, it will get revisited mandatory in ten years. But if, say, two years from now, we say this was a terrible idea, we need the access, you know, it'll be back up to.
David?
Two points, first of all, to address your idea of people driving on, our article does say closed to winter maintenance and passage. Okay, so the way we've written this, it is indeed closed to anybody going in there. However, we say from above, whatever, eighty-five Hasty Road, that could be anywhere from eighty-five Hasty Road down to the parking lot, and we could decide that down at the parking lot is where we're going to close it off.
That would be an ideal spot to end up.
Or maybe close it off there, and then when it gets bad, close it off a little further back towards eighty-five. I mean, that, it, it's not specific about where the location, your point is good one's up.
Yes, Carol?
We had, last year when you guys closed in month season, they still could snowmobile, and they did start packing up there, and they had a hard time unloading, and they were blocking that in. Trash truck, it was only a day or two they did it, but the trash truck wouldn't have been able to turn around, because they parked, he left a little bit of room, and they filled it with, with trailers and cats.
Jeff, something quick?
Yeah, I think snowmobiles can find places, I know, I used to go to Stanley Vaughn, it was limited, but you know, it's just limited, it's just the way it rolls. But let's hope, you know, let's revert back to closing it the way it used to be. And in December, I think, the story quote said there might be two contracts, if, if we did close it, there'd be a contract for some of these roads being closed and some of them being open. So I think that was the negotiating room.
Okay, any further discussion on Article forty-two, Hasty Road? Here and none, all those in favor of Article forty-two as read. Who raised your hand? Those opposed, the article is approved. Article forty-three, to see if the town will vote to close a portion of the Kisa Mountain Road from the Great Bridge to three seventy-seven Kisa Mountain Road to winter maintenance and passage from November one through November thirty of the following year for the next ten years. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Move and second it, discussion. Here and none, all those in favor of Article forty-three is read. Those opposed, the article is approved. Article forty-four, to see if the town will vote to authorize the use of a portion of the American Rescue Plan ARCA funds in the amount of eighteen thousand three hundred dollars to purchase two roll-off containers to be used to enable town residents to dispose of items at the Tri-Town Transfer Station. And it says use of these federal funds does not affect the tax rate. Have motion?
No.
Move and second it, discussion. Jeff?
I guess if we're paying for these containers, are they going to be on it? Parsons Field?
I don't know.
They, they, they said they gladly do whatever they care less, they can throw trash in them just the same.
I, I didn't know, we, we buy two new ones, and then they get, a company picks them up and then brings back?
They have their own trucking. They do their own trucking, they don't weave, they weave, but they come, they literally don't weave the truck, they take them in, they dump them, they bring them back.
I know, like, you know, propane tanks, you get wherever they leave it, you know?
No, they have their own trucking company.
So we'll have our own dumpster with Parsons Field on it, and that's.
Well, it's just going to be a rotation. So what, what was happening was, by them taking us on, they don't have room for the volume that they could possibly get on Memorial Day weekend or Labor Day weekend, some of these big weekends where everybody shows up. So they needed, so they just pull them out. When it's full, they pull it out and set it over there until they can get the guy to take it in and dump it, you know what I mean? But they, we're running out of dumpsters to rotate.
I get that, they want us to buy a very new one and then have to replace it with something, just a little junk.
And this is not for household trash, you all realize that?
Right.
We still have our trash picked up once a week.
It's just for bulky items.
Right, it's, it's. Do we have the bulky pickup? This is for the people?
It's on page, if anyone wants to know, you're all in twenty-two and twenty-three. It gives a rundown and it's.
This is for people who really don't want to wait, they're closing their camp up, and they want to get rid of their refrigerator, or their air conditioner, or their, whatever. This will give them a vehicle to do that, cost them a few dollars, but at least they can properly dispose of the item.
Don't have to leave it out in that woodchill.
Yes.
Okay, are there going to be any type of chemicals put in these that are hazardous?
Uh, shouldn't be.
How that can be launched?
This is, this is nothing to do, this is, we don't handle any of this. This is Tri-Town Transfer Station. All we are doing is paying to use the station. They have their own, this, they're their own entity, they're.
I will tell you, you go to Tri-Town, I'll tell you, you go to Tri-Town, and people put their stuff in, and whether there's plutonium in there or what, obviously, at some transfer station somewhere a month or so ago, somebody had some iodine crystals, and you saw the purple skies and, for, those poor guys have enough to do, they don't, they can't be sorted.
I was just wondering.
Yeah, no, there maybe has been, because that's how people are.
It's right here, what, go there.
But anyway, okay. Any further discussion on Article forty-four, eighteen thousand three hundred of ARCA funds for the roll-off?
One more thing, Steve. So when I met with them, initially, we were going to pay like, so say, they paid ten cents a pound to get rid of something from, you know, from the Tri-Town, we were going to pay like thirty cents or forty cents a pound. Well, because that's a multi-million dollar facility, and we were just kind of like showing up and using it, which, so I understood no matter kind of what price they threw at us, we were kind of getting a good end of the deal as far as I could tell. And then it became apparent to them that it was much easier for them, for the guys working there, not to decipher, okay, you're from Parsons Field, you pay that much, but, you know, a different rate. It was easier for them to keep the rates all the same, and they needed these dumpsters to halt, to house us, they were going to have to buy them anyways. And so upfront, we're buying these in return of us using the whole Tri-Town, except for the household trash, for the same price that the Tri-Town people use, which is a win-win if you ask me.
Okay, further discussion on Article forty-four. Jeff?
Just one quick thing, are they going to keep track of how much time is in Parsons Field brings?
No.
Just, I just.
I don't, well, I, I, well, if they do, it's for their own bookkeeping purposes on whether they make it out or not, but it.
No, I was just curious, I mean, there was, you know.
At a point of business on their part, that might be a good idea to know whether it's worth it or not, you know? If we're bringing in a wicked law, then it's, right.
I don't believe the personnel exists.
No, no, I get, I get, it was just a question.
Yeah. Okay, Article forty-four, we ready to vote? All those in favor of Article forty-four as presented. Those opposed, Article forty-four is accepted. Article forty-five, see if the town will vote to authorize the use of the remainder of the American Rescue Plan ARCA funds for the repair of roads and bridges. This amount will be in the range of twenty-five thousand and fifty thousand dollars. Use of federal funds does not affect the tax rate. Do we have a motion?
No.
Move and second it, discussion. Here and none, all those in favor of Article forty-five as presented. Those opposed, article is approved. Everybody likes to spend three minutes. Now, Danielle, do I need a small written vote on this next article?
No.
What?
I don't think you can.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we do need a written vote.
Yeah, we, okay, this Article forty-six is, is a state of Maine thing, they dumped on us, and I think in about two thousand and five. It's a formality, it has to be done by a written vote. According for the written vote is three members, do we have some little pieces of paper? And we got three, three or four people who'd be willing to come forward and vote. It's not the moderator's place to tell you how to vote, but it would be easy if this passed easily. So if, if we could get three or four registered voters to come up.
Point of interest, complete the article. Point of interest, can we take the article on the table?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Article forty-six, see if the town will vote to exceed the twenty twenty-three municipal property tax levy per MRSA Title Thirty-three. Affirmative vote will allow the municipality to surpass the twenty twenty-two limit, but requires that the twenty twenty-three limit be used as the base for next year's limit calculation. We have a motion?
I don't.
Yeah, move and second in, voting, secret voting will commence. As many people can vote as want, as want to. It's not limited to three, but that's the minimum. You declare the voting closed, Danielle? I thought I heard that.
We have three yeses.
Three yeses. The, the article is accepted. Okay, we've come to the end. This has been a good, good discussion and nobody's cell, nobody's cellphone went off. That's, that's a first in a long time that I've heard. Article forty-seven, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Move and second, and all those in favor of adjourned. Those opposed, thank you very much, the meeting is adjourned.